The City of New Britain. Building hope together for a greater community.
Good evening, everyone. September 27, 2017. This is the public participation section of our regular Common Council meeting. I will go through the requirements as always. This is obviously public participation. We certainly encourage everyone to come forward. We have several people who are signed up. Please come up and present your name and your address. And there's a three-minute time limit. I believe our time limit is actually above, to my left, and just to my left. So that will be an indicator of when that time is up. I hope that doesn't get too much confusion for anyone. But there will be a chime after that, and it will ring loudly enough, and then that will be the end of the time that you will have. And I think we're ready to go. Charles Terseau, or Terseau? If I mispronounce your name, please.
I think he ran to the bathroom real quick.
All right, we'll move on then. Erin Marvino, or Marino?
Marsino.
Marsino. Thank you. We officially begin at 7:01. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Shall I start?
By all means, yes. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Erin E. Marsino. I live at 53 Lyons Street. And I'm here today to talk about the public hearing of the Historic Preservation Commission that occurred on Monday at 6:30 PM, right down the hall in Room 201. So this was a public hearing for the properties at 600 Myrtle Street. And so the Historic Preservation Commission ordered the public hearing so that voices could be heard in conjunction with the demolition of the Stanley Works buildings, including statements from the Stanley Black &amp; Decker Corporation themselves. They were present, as well as several members of the community. So I wanted to just brief everyone on what happened there. So the Stanley representative from engineering firm noted some minor structural reasons as why, you know, these buildings were dangerous. Some of them have already been condemned, and that demolition is going on already, including the steam plant where the big tower is. The tower is still there, but as of right now, it will be coming down soon. Other than that, there was really only minor comments of some spalled brick, bulging brick at the exterior, and some, you know, failing roof on the rolling mill, which is one of the most important historic properties. And they confirm that the site, right now, will only be used as a parking lot. That's the main goal. So, you know, there's no development coming, as, you know, if we can take them at their word, it's parking. They studied the reuse of the buildings for their purposes. They found that, you know, they don't need the office space, they don't need, you know, it can't be repurposed for industrial, so it will be parking lot. So we're here today to kind of urge you guys to work with them. You know, if they need parking, find out how much. See if there's anywhere else in the city that can accommodate their needs, and see if we can save just a few of the buildings. Because a lot of the comments, we had 10 participants speak, as well as three write-ins, including representatives from the Hartford Preservation Alliance, the City Historian of Norwich, and the State Historic Preservation Office, which confirmed that these buildings are in good enough shape to be reused, and that they would make great candidates for some of the historic rehabilitation tax credits. So I think a parking feasibility study, you know, isn't a lot, can be done fairly quickly, and to try to, you know, take this to them, see what they can do. If they need parking, try to work with them. And there's a couple properties in particular. One is the historic rolling mill, the one with the big, the gable roof and large arch windows, as well as the bridge that goes across Curtis Street. So, you know, selectively demo, it's a large lot. There's plenty of room for parking without taking down everything, and that was sort of the, you know, consensus of the public's comments. So thank you.
Oh, I know it is. Charles Terseau, or Terseau? Please, I'm sorry, writing part. I could not really clearly state your name. Just for your ratification, sir, since you weren't here present when we began, that we do have a three-minute time limit, and please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Charles Terseau, and I am from 44 South High Street, New Britain, Connecticut. Greetings, Alderman. New Britain was set up by Frederick T. Stanley as a great place to work and live. When other cities started on rivers using hydro power, Stanley said, "We don't need that," and spent too much in a steam engine from New York City. The first factory failed, he started over. When it burned, he rebuilt it. He separated us from Berlin and became town alderman, then made New Britain a city to free it from town restrictions. He steered the rail line by the city, then made a first train. They named a first train after him. He became the first mayor of New Britain. When the city was built, he donated his backyard and convinced neighbors to contribute, establishing Walnut Hill Park. He hired the most expensive and famous landscape architects in the world, Frederick La Almstead and Calvert Voe, to design the park and streets of the West End Historic District. It's no accident this factory is close by, and other industrialists want to live and work in New Britain, near the world-class park and rail line he made happen. Now, this lot needs a lot of demolition. The original equipment and exhaust pipes are still intact, and there's too many buildings. But we owe it to the city and the man who designed it as a playground for industry to save some of them as a testament to our beginnings. The Historic Commission is shy of using their eight-month-old powers on stay of demolition, or make any historic declaration and freeze this area in time. They don't want to set a precedent. We don't invite buyers and industry, which goes against the historic spirit of the city. Where Happy Stanley is investing money in demolition and cleanup, it's a giant, overbuilt, unused property for 20-plus years. We'd like the city to work with Stanley to open parking solutions while preserving architectural excitement. Frederick T. Stanley's accomplishments demand some of the 33 manufacturing buildings are preserved through negotiation at the civic level without historic pressure. We can decide not to wipe out 95 years of visual history of manufacturing prior to 1940 on our own. Of course, it helps if we get a stay of demolition from the Historical Commission, but can we do it without it? They are the safety net. We are the trapeze artists. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Brendan Rudge.
That's it. Brendan Rudge, 53 Lyons Street, New Britain, Connecticut. Good evening, Commissioners. You are all aware now, if you hadn't been before those two spoke, of the plans to demolish the historic Stanley Works factory on Myrtle Street. And I'm here to tell you, this is a raw deal for our city. We cannot afford to lose another irreplaceable piece of our history, and to be left with a massive undeveloped lot that will both harm our tax base and our city's ability to grow and develop in the near future. At this time, by Stanley's own admission, there is no plan or even any desire to develop this site or to sell it to allow someone else to develop the property for another use. So we will be stuck with a large, undeveloped, and undeveloped piece of property just blocks away from our downtown. We've been down this road. We know how it affects our city. It took 20 years for the Pfaffner property to be developed, but we're sitting back and we're letting it happen again. Despite what you read in the Herald today, the engineering reports that Stanley had created or had hired a company to produce to justify the demolition have been refuted by state officials, saying that not only can this building be saved, but it should, and if allowed to be sold to a qualified developer, can be a financially viable and successful project. Renovation and development of these buildings would generate new life into the surrounding neighborhoods of downtown, the West End, and Little Poland, and generate more tax revenue for our city than the company's current plan. We've seen it numerous times in other cities, the best example being the renovation of the Colt factory and the rejuvenation of the Coltsville neighborhood. It's a time that I ask for your strength, your dedication, intelligence, and most of all, leadership, for which we put you in those chairs today. We cannot allow the short-term savings of a private interest, even one as important and large as the Stanley Black &amp; Decker Corporation, to trump the long-term success of our city, the city that built their company. Some of you I've talked to already and have said there's nothing we can do. But I plead with you to please talk with the State Historic Preservation Office, who produced a report saying that, yes, this is a viable project to save this building, and to work with the Stanley Black &amp; Decker Corporation to save some or all of the property, and let them know that any plan that harms our city or our growth is unacceptable. I know we want to be a business-friendly community, and I think we've done a lot to do that, but that doesn't mean we walk, we let companies walk all over us. So I ask that you be the strong leaders that we need you to be, to save these buildings and save a piece of our history, as well as our city's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak before the council? Anyone else who would like to speak before the council for participation? Anyone else who would like to speak for public participation to the common council?
If anyone has any questions?
No, we don't do, I'm sorry, we don't do questions during the public hearing, during the public participation process. That's okay. Yeah, just statements. All right, thank you. Then we'll close this public participation section at 7:12 PM. Are there any Aldermen that would like to comment with regard to public participation? Seeing none. I would like to make just a comment. I know, Mr. Rudge, I appreciate your time for this particular issue and project. I do want to, for the record, say that I knew I also received your email, as the other Alderman did, and I believe I also called you to discuss with you anything you want to, and that is still open on my part, and I'm sure it's open for other members of the council as well. I did not get a call back, but I would like to, at any given time, to at least give you my position and where I stand on personally, but everyone else here sure has similar comments to make. Thank you. We'll begin our common council meeting shortly.
Okay. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council. The date is September 27, 2017. The time is 7:23 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons, G. Antonio.
Here.
Smedley.
Present.
Carlosi.
Black.
Collins.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
Naples.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Polkowski.
Present.
Rosato.
Here.
Salvio.
Lozto.
Sanchez.
Sanders.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
12 present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Can we all please rise for the invocation, which will be followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, the turning of leaf colors and the shortening of sunlight remind us the change of season is rapidly approaching. We thank you that the seeds you provided have grown, ripened, and were harvested. Rogers Orchards and numerous country fairs showcase your generous bounty. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My software is still updating here, so we're gonna take it old-school with a paper copy. It's always good to have a backup. We don't have any meeting minutes today, so we will move on to amendments to the agenda. Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to amend the agenda as follows. Withdraw item 8 and move item 6 to the front of the agenda in front of number 1. Make a motion to amend the agenda by withdrawing item 8 and move number 6 to the front as number 1.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Smedley. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons, G. Antonio.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosato.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Salerno.
Yes.
12-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries. Any petitions tonight, Mr. Clerk?
No petitions, Your Honor.
Woo! See you later, Chief Wardwell. Have a great night. Sorry, Chief Margantino, you're not off the hook yet. Well, consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am aware of item D asked off of consent. That's it. Therefore, I make a motion to accept a consent agenda consisting of items A, B, C, and E. A, B, C, E.
A, B, C, E. Did I hear a second? Seconded by Alderman Hargraves. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons, G. Antonio.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosato.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Salerno.
Yes.
12-0, Your Honor.
Motion carries. We have D requested off. Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take a quick second to discuss this report that I asked for through petition to talk about.
In a motion.
Oh.
Make a motion to accept.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to accept this report.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
Let me start my rambling again. So this was a report that I requested through petition about the effects of the parking in the downtown. I'd like to thank our property manager, Jonathan Delgadillo. If I got that right. Sorry. It's very informative here.
Delgadio, Delgadijo, however you want to pronounce it.
The report has a lot of information, and then what stuck out the most to me, Your Honor, was since from 2012 to 2016, '17, we've seen a reduction in tickets of over 8,000, which is huge, but yet we're still bringing in the same income. So I think that's a good thing, but I think it does open up the door to see, is that compliance, or is it a little bit of a lack of enforcement or culmination? So I'm not sure what to do with this from here, but I'd like to see it go to the commission for some discussion, to see if we could look at how these numbers really came about and what we can do to help our downtown businesses, which is how this came about, making it, you know, we have to enforce our parking and make people comply with our regulations, but at the same time, we don't want to rip their purses apart and make people, you know, still want to come downtown. So I guess just a question, probably to you, Your Honor, is, could we just get this on the Parking Commission's agenda for discussion? And where it goes from there, I don't know, but at least we can have some more dialogue on it.
I believe that this, you're looking at the Desmond study, right? Because it went through from them. So they've already seen it, discussed it. I mean, we could certainly have it back to them. I'm sure Chairman Steele would be fine with it.
Yeah, I think just a commission-level discussion to see if there's any tweaking we can do, you know, and keep our downtown businesses in mind when we're discussing it.
I can refer it there.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that.
That's no problem. My personal opinion is we need an entire parking system overhaul.
I agree.
We're just not there yet. Sorry, John, I don't mean to create more worry from you, as John is sitting back there like, what are you talking about? We will send that to the Parking Commission to have a discussion on perhaps some thoughts and best practices, and maybe looking at where we can go from here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto resolution number 6, which is now resolution number 1. Alderman G. Antonio, and I think Mayor Pavlak will approach the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number 6.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution has to deal with the city using poll books, and rather than me trying to explain it, former Mayor Pavlak, now registrar voters, is at the podium. I'd ask you to just give us a brief overview of what this is. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for.
Oh, turn, um.
You got it. There's a red button.
Sorry, we're hip now.
You're talking to an old guy. Now, I was just, a little-known fact, do you know where Mark's podium came from? Somers Prison, so that's how far back I go. That was a gift to me by the prisoners up there. I would, through the chair, ask our IT manager for assistance, because there may be some technical questions that I can't answer. But basically, ladies and gentlemen, this is a system that will allow electronic entry into a poll book of voters who come to the polls. I just want to clarify, because when I did all these pitches for the secretary, there is no guarantee that that voter has voted. We have what's called runaway voters. We have people who come in, get checked in, they put their ballot in their pocket, and they go. It happens. So this is a system that will allow, in real time, the registrar's office, whether it's the campaigns, and the polling places to talk to each other to see who has actually showed up at the poll. And it will also benefit us in entering people who voted that day, who did show up at the poll, who will be checked as voting in an electronic fashion, because it will be uploaded into our system, which will save probably at least 100 hours of entry of the registrar's office. First of all, I neglected to thank a lot of people. Peter Gosten first approached me with this, about two months into my tenure as registrar, and I had heard about this, but I didn't know that the city of New Britain actually did a test run four years ago. I want to thank Mayor Stewart for the courtesy of sitting down, talking to us, and allowing her staff to work with us. Mark Bernacki, our town and city clerk, was fabulous. Adam Pokorski, couldn't ask for a better guy in that position. A lot of people contributed, our staff contributed. Every demonstration we had, every meeting we had was a collaboration, and questions were asked, and we decided to go with a company called LHS. And the Noink is the technology company that they partnered with. LHS, by the way, is also the company that programs our memory cards. If my voice is getting weak, I had surgery Saturday, but according to Majority Leader Salerno, he had similar surgery, but he recovered a lot faster than I did. I don't know what that is, Dan. It must be that Italian gene. I don't know. But, so I'm a little shaky on my feet right now, but Peter Gosten, we're lucky to have him. He's at a registrar's conference this evening, setting an agenda for our annual fall conference. He is the treasurer of the statewide organization, and without the treasurer, nothing functions. So again, the system we're buying into, we chose because of its longevity, because of the fact that when Adam and I and Peter and Mark and everybody talked about that, if we bought something else, we may be buying laptops again in another four or five years, which would be an additional cost. We expect these iPads to be just as good this year and 10 years from now. The system we saw will allow us to scan driver's licenses to identify people, which will increase the flow through the polling place. It also prints a receipt that the person will take to the ballot clerk, hand it to him, which gives us another paper trail as to how many people actually voted. But it will never replace what is now Connecticut law, which is the official checkbook. So just as with the scanner, we have a paper trail, we will have a paper trail with the entry that was made into the iPad, and the entry that was made into the official book can be compared, and if there was ever an audit or questions, we do have a paper backup. I don't want to go into too much detail. If you have technical questions, please refer to Adam. He's been invaluable in this whole process. But it is something that 27 other towns in Connecticut use. They actually use another vendor. They use a local husband-and-wife team that were formerly registrars and became technology experts and introduced this in Connecticut. And the fear for us was, one, that maybe they'll get bought out, because it's a decent product, but it's certainly not as advanced as we have now. They don't have the backup that we would need. If we had a crisis on Election Day, this is a much bigger company with a lot more experience in elections. And I personally worked with LHS for four years, introducing these scanners into the state, and believe me, I've got the owner on speed dial. So if anything ever happens, they gave us plenty of training time. They gave us a generous discount from the original proposal, because we would be the first in Connecticut to use their product. And Adam, I don't know if you want to add anything, or wait for the, excuse me?
Budget neutral.
It is budget neutral after 10 years, though.
Well, on an annual basis, though.
On an annual basis, it is, yes. On an annual basis, the mayor smiled. And that's what she wants to hear. But I don't blame you, Mayor. I've been there before. Those budgets are tough. But it is going to, you know, budget neutral.
Now, we get in the parking lot, and you're just laughing.
Why do we say budget neutral? I don't know how many of you go back, but we still, you know, when I ran in August of last year, I was asked by the registrar, "Do you want a party checker on your, you know, on your line?" Well, I said, "No, you know, I don't need to burden the city with that." After all, I only had four people working on my campaign anyway. So Alderman, you remember that, right? Alderman Naples. But, so we won't have that party checker. We will make this available to one person in campaigns that represent whoever is running. They will be, in real time, able to upload and print spreadsheets as to who came to the poll, so you can, in your headquarters, check off people instead of delegating it to someone who's going to stop and have a cup of coffee and maybe chat for another hour while you're waiting for the book to come back from the polling place. So I'll leave it at that and leave it to you folks to ask some questions. If not, thank you very much for the courtesy. And again, this has been a seven-month process. It involved a lot of people, and I think we made the best decision for the city.
Thank you very much.
So just, I'll yield the floor in a minute. I just want to say, I think we heard the great work that went into this, and thank you to everyone involved. I think this is a good thing, bringing us into the 21st century once again, and I urge adoption. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Alderman G. Antonio. Alderman Smedley.
Thank you through you, Your Honor. Thank you very much for all the information about this. You answered two out of three of my questions already. The third question I had of is, I know that the checkbook is still required by law. Does this, or will this eliminate the need for the person to stop at the checkbook? Can the poll workers use the data from the system to check them off in the checkbook?
No, the checkbook will always be the official book until Connecticut changes.
So stop 1 will be the iPad, stop 2 will be the poll worker for the checkbook, and then stop 3?
They'll be side by side, so they'll hear the name.
Okay.
But if they prefer, they can just scan the, and they'll be able to look at the pad and see that it is Alderman Smedley.
Okay.
But, you know, Peter tells me the associations have been working on this for four years, lobbying the legislature, but I personally know somebody up at Yukon that's going to block every attempt to go electronic in Connecticut. And I don't know if it's rightfully so or not. On an issue like this, I think it's not as damaging as some of the other things, because we're not going to be reporting. You know, this is going to be the convenience of this city. We're not going to be transmitting that information. We're going to be uploading it to our system. So it's, again, it's going to be very helpful to us in the office, and I think the voter will have a great experience.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any further? Alderman Pabon.
Are we going to save any money on this? At the polls?
Are you going to save money? You should. I mean, if you're going to eliminate all the party checkers and all that stuff, eventually, and I think that's the point Adam wanted to make, is that it is.
So it'll pay for itself, then?
Excuse me?
So this will pay for itself?
With one election, we're budget neutral. If we have multiple elections, and for any year.
Go ahead.
For any given year, if we have one election, it's budget neutral. If we have a primary, then we're in the black, and the expense, because of the expense of the runners, we're actually saving money. And preventing error.
And preventing error.
And Alderman, I don't know, but New Britain wasn't as peaceful as it is now. We were known for three or four elections a year. You know, people would die in office, people would run for special, and right now, again, that's the hope. Revenue neutral, one election, we save money after that.
We've come a long way.
Is it going to be running for this election, or?
Yes. As soon as the council approves and the mayor signs, we can get delivery as early as next week.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Adam's already downloading some information.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So this system would eliminate the need to have a poll worker, a poll person, collect the little receipt and run it back?
Well, that's not, that's not the goal. This system will eliminate, let's say, our need to manually enter every voter that showed up at the poll. This system will speed up the process of checking voters in, because the person who's sitting next to them as the official checker will be able to see on a screen the name. If that person chooses to use driver's license, that's even better, because at that point, that picture will appear and say, "This is actually Alderman Davis." So there's going to be a fraud also benefit. This system will help the campaigns in providing them real-time information as to how many voters have showed up at District One, how many voters have showed up at District Two. You can tap into the system and actually see what's going on in District Eight. It will help all poll workers. If you show up and you're at the wrong poll, believe it or not, this thing will even print you a map to show you where to go to your right poll. So on the back of the little slip that we're talking about, there'll be a map there to show you that if you show up advanced, but you really voted Gaffney, it'll give you a map of how to get from Vance to Gaffney. I mean, you know, I'm 70 years old, so I'm kind of technology neutral, is that the phrase? Revenue is coming in because I got a job, you know, but technology, I'm neutral. So there's a lot of things that maybe I'm not relaying to you guys, but believe me, this is a good thing for our city, and people will come into the poll, and they're going to think they're somewhere on a good ship of Star Trek or something. Because this is a little iPad that sits up on a little pedestal, and it's very, very useful to both the city and candidates. And I mean, you can't ask for anything better than that. You talk about, it's a bipartisan effort. I can't begin to tell you how much time Peter spent on this. And again, he's a leader in our association, and I know how hard he worked, and I know always the first courtesy is to the mayor, and I thank her for standing by this. And we went through the budget process on this. We did a lot to get it to this point.
Well, listen, don't sell yourself short. You sound like you understand the process very well. Sounds like a cool piece of technology.
Alderman, let me give you a quick story, if the mayor lets me. I went to a registrar's conference, and 10 years ago, they were ready to take my head off for bringing this optical scanner along and making them switch from that 950-pound Last year, Peter invited me to the registrar's conference, and they all were beaming and talking about how great the optical scan was. And that sometimes takes time to, you know, turn people on to something that's new, and this is something that's new, but I think people will adopt this, and it's going to be tremendous asset to, again, the voters, our office, and also the political candidates.
Looks great. Can't wait to see it. Thank you.
Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two techie questions. First one, is the database information already preloaded onto the pads? I know some polling places don't have the availability for Wi-Fi for the iPads. And the second question is, is it a database that we're comparing the driver license information to, or are we just scanning the driver license information and keeping it as a record?
Sure. So to answer your first question, the data, we upload the data from the state ever system, so all voter registration information is already in the e-poll book database. That is a cloud application that's cloud-driven, and it does need internet access. However, if there was an internet outage, they would still be able to maintain voter information and still check in, and then when the connection resumed, they would then call home and then they would resync. Each poll book in a location has peer-to-peer communication, so they talk with one another. So if there's two lines set up, and one person went into one line and then went to the other, they would see that that person voted. So again, I think that, obviously, the internet is a big part of it, and we certainly are leveraging internet, and we're going to have to have hotspots at these locations, and that's how they get uploaded real-time, so these campaigns can see who voted, when they voted, where they voted, and so forth. And again, the driver's license, on the back of every single driver's license, there's a QR code or some kind of a code. And all that is, is that is information that we know how to read. So this system knows how to read it. So it doesn't store that information, it just removes, it's to prevent errors, it's to make the system error-prone. Somebody hands a driver's license and we scan it. If there's a junior, if there's a senior, there's, you know, we remove all error, because what ends up happening is, we read that, the backside of the driver's license, and in that little zebra or whatever, that barcode or whatever they have on the back of the license, it stores the information that's on the front end. So the computer just reads what it is, and it doesn't store it, doesn't keep it. We just identify the person that's coming to vote.
Okay. So just, if I may make a recommendation, call Jordan now when you leave this meeting. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of comments, actually. I'm sitting here thinking of the technological advances that we've made in the past two years, and I think what's more amazing is the enthusiasm that comes from the people doing it. Our town clerk, Mark Bernacki, former mayor of Lucian Pavlock, Adam Pokorski. It's just amazing to see the enthusiasm in moving us forward in that technological aspect, which I'm still trying to catch up with myself. So I just wanted to make that comment. It makes me feel proud to be part of all this, and I think that each and every one of you guys are doing a fantastic job, and it reflects in your attitudes, in your presentation, and in how the city looks at City Hall today. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Adam, Mark, Mayor.
We look forward to seeing it. Go home, take care of yourself, heal up.
I'm too stupid to lay down.
Don't come to work tomorrow. Take a day off.
You're probably an email writer. I'm still better at 50%.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Onto resolution number one now, which would go to Alderman Rosado. Alderman Salerno. Sorry. I got my Italian in my...
It's part of our diversity, Your Honor. I appreciate that.
Sorry.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt the original item one.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salvio.
Through you, Your Honor. Normally, this is not tradition for me. Alderman Carlosi very often has taken the lead on this as a senior member of the council, but I give the humble privilege to be able to do so. As someone who is an Italian-American, for the record, half Italian, I'm also Polish and Austrian. But the resolution before us, and I will not read the entire resolution, I promise you, but it is for the Italian-American Heritage Month and Columbus Day. We have so many distinguished members of the population in the city of New Britain who are Italian and come from Italy and Sicily, tremendous number of people who have served and done so much for the community. So it's a tribute to that and to Columbus Day celebrations that take place on a regular basis. I do want to say that there are a number of organizations that are mentioned within the resolution, and I think I'm trying to post that for the record, because the resolution is important. And I just point out that the General Meglio Society is one of those where my grandfather was actually one of the original founders of it back in 1913. So we're very proud of our heritage, as everyone's proud of their respective heritage, and I move for adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Salerno. As part of that record, I will state that we have strong professional presence by the following organizations in town, including the Italian-American Fraternal Organizations, the Angelo Tomaso Senior Lodge Order of the Sons of Italy and America, Calabria Mia, General Meglio Society, the Angelo Costode Society, the Campo di Pietra Society, and the Italian Heritage Foundation, all based out of the city of New Britain. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
You know, one more, Your Honor. As long as I've got that, since I thought you did a great job covering all those bases which I should have. But I just want to recommend we have a number of Italian-Americans on our council as well, and I would ask those to stand up and tell us, show us who you are, if you will. Alderman Naples, Alderman Salvio, Alderman Giantonio, and Alderman Sanders all have Italian-American heritage, so we're very proud of that, and we, our presence represents exactly that resolution.
Thank you.
Oh, did I? Oh, I apologize, Alderman Salvio.
Thank you very much. And we know Alderman Carlosi is watching at home, so we hope that we did you well. If we didn't do well with that resolution, I'm sure he'll be getting a text message in about four minutes to tell us otherwise. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Resolution number two, now to Alderman Rosado.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number two.
Seconded by Alderman Pobon.
This resolution has to do with National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is recognized from September 15th to October 15th of each year, granting us as a nation and a community the opportunity to join together and celebrate the diverse culture and acknowledge the abounding achievements and benefactions of all residents with Hispanic roots. And whereas Hispanic individuals have made major contributions to the development of our country and our city through leadership in government, business, education, sports, and the arts, and whereas approximately 54 million Hispanic individuals reside in our country, making those with Hispanic roots the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority, and whereas there are over 2.3 million Hispanic-owned businesses which have generated over 350.7 billion in our national economy, making them an asset to our economic health, and whereas the city of New Britain is honored to be a home to such an illustrious population and proudly recognizes all the accomplishments Hispanic men and women have made in developing this community, and now therefore be resolved that the city of New Britain proclaims September 15, 2017, October 15, 2017, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to celebrate with appropriate programs and activities that memorialize the contributions of Hispanic individuals to our nation and our community, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rosado. Anyone else like to comment? We will be culminating the Hispanic Heritage Month on October 7th with our dedication of the Boricuanees Monument at the end of Washington and Beaver Street. We will all be there to very proudly dedicate the first, probably the largest memorial in the country, dedicated to the 65th Infantry, the Boricuanees, which was an all Hispanic unit that fought for our freedom. Alderman Rosado.
Now, I want to add to that, Your Honor, that on top of being National Hispanic Heritage Month, our thoughts and prayers go out to those in Puerto Rico, those that have family members that are here in our city that still haven't heard from any of those that are out there. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the island and to any of those that are affected.
And a big shout-out goes to the Puerto Rican Society, Alderman Pobon, for helping to co-sponsor with us a big donation drive that we had, and where we collected enough bottled water that it was piled eight feet high on the side of West Main Street. It was very overwhelming, the amount of support. We've also started a hurricane relief fund through the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain, and if you go online to the Community Foundation's website, you'll be able to access the Hurricane Maria Relief tab. All the money that gets donated through the Community Foundation will be vetted through the Community Foundation and then granted to support agencies in Puerto Rico, once we have more information on where the resources need to specifically go. It's one thing to donate broadly to the Red Cross, how we feel, however, it's another thing to donate specifically to organizations that we know are going to do good and have a larger impact on our communities, especially where many of our families from New Britain come from. So I would encourage everybody to consider making a donation as well. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number three.
Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
Resolution number three deals with the New Britain Fire Marshal's Office requesting the purchase of seven personal protective clothing utilizing the CRCOG's Contract Award 649. The protective clothing will be worn by the fire department's personnel during fire investigations, fire inspections, and all other related activities where members of the Fire Marshal's Office may find themselves in hazardous environments. The members of the New Britain Fire Marshal's Office have researched and developed specifications that are needed, and this is definitely something they need, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Collins. Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, if I could ask Chief Argentino to join us at the podium.
Good evening, can you please push the on button?
The little voice one?
The face with the squiggly lines.
There you go. First time up.
Oh, wait, no, see, technically, he booted me.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
No, I booted you, because I used my everybody zip it button. Look, and it turns everybody off.
You're going to have to press that button again, chief.
Fancy, schmancy.
Thank you, thank you for joining us, and welcome to the council meetings. I just have a question. Can you describe the protective clothing to us? Is it similar to what the firefighters wear off the truck, or is it a little bit?
It's a lighter material, but it is similar to what the firefighters are wearing today. It's a protective ensemble, the bunker pants, but they're lightweight. They're not what we're wearing inside the fire buildings.
Okay.
And basically, it's for protection against any of the carcinogens that we're dealing with. They're crawling around, doing their inspections. They are doing their investigations of a working fire, so.
And is it just like an overall setup, or is it include boots and everything that they have to suit up?
They have boots, bunker pants, and a coat, and they do have some helmets. Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman Giantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt resolution number four.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes the city to purchase 3,729 photoelectric smoke alarms from Home Depot to be given out to New Britain residents. You know, I know this does come with a price tag of $50,000, but when we think about smoke alarms and fire detectors and how important they are to people's safeties, I think this is a small price to pay, and if these smoke alarms help one person safely get out of a fire, they've paid for themselves 10 times over. I urge adoption, and chief is still standing at the mic if anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you. Chief, how are the homes or the homeowners selected to receive these, or what is the process for someone to request them?
They can call the Fire Marshal's Office if they're looking for a smoke detector, but also upon inspections, if the Fire Marshals notice that they need smoke detectors, then our crews go out and install them. This was through a grant, so really, the city's not looking at a large expense on this. Most of the money's coming from the grant.
Semi-loaded question, because I've worked in dispatch for 10 years. Do you just go out randomly and inspect houses, like the single-family homes and apartment buildings, or how do you get to those inspections where you say, "Oh, you need a smoke detector"?
Fire Marshals are doing inspections, not of single-family homes, but when we go to an alarm, if they are in the structure and they see that they don't have them, then we will install them. Yes.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to add, I think this was a really great thing that we will be doing, and I also just want to urge and encourage all of our residents to make sure that they do check their firearms, their smoke alarms, make sure they test them, and that any batteries that need to be changed, make sure you do so. So just on top of this, just an added measure that I encourage all of our residents to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Hargraves.
Thank you, Your Honor. So are these the new smoke detector, 10 years?
10-year batteries.
So they don't have to worry about every six months to change the batteries?
Yeah, we're not looking for them to take them out to put in their radios or anything like that.
Yeah. So you don't have to change it every time you change your clocks?
Right.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you for your time and time. Good night. Bye. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Resolution number five, Alderman Sanders.
Make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number five.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Resolution number five has to do with public bid number 3923, the 2017 trench repair program. We actually approved this on August 9th at our meeting, and we awarded it to Champion Maintenance Contractors. They have failed to comply with our insurance and bond regulations, so we've had to go with the second highest bidder, which was William Layden Construction. They were actually the 2016 contractor, and they got rave reviews from our Public Works Department. They did a good job. Just kind of goes to show you, going with the lowest guy isn't always the best. So my ears adoption, so we can move this, keep our trenches repairs on schedule. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to skip down to resolution seven, Alderman Naples.
Your Honor, I move to accept and refer to the consolidated subcommittee resolution number seven.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
This is, involves raising the maximum penalty in the Section 115 ordinance for a general penalty from maximum of $90 to maximum of $99. The reason for doing this is, $90 has been the general maximum for many years, and since then, many penalties have gone to $99. One example is not taking trash cans in within the time allotted. So we run into a situation where one department, if the police gives a ticket, it might be $99, the same offense. If Building Services gives a ticket, they cite the general penalty ordinance, and it's $90. So this will make a lot more consistency, so I urge referral.
Thank you very much, Alderman Antonio. I'm breaking my own rules. Thank you very much, Alderman Naples. Any other questions or comments on resolution number seven? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman G. Antonio for the last resolution of the evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept and refer item nine to the Committee on Planning, Zoning, and Housing.
Seconded by Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. This has to do with leasing property at 39 Bank Street to Bike New Britain for one year for the rate of $200 a month. I urge referral, and we will talk more about it at committee. Thank you.